There was discussion about a fourth option of a secured foundation. And a couple of the -- many of the members, including myself, did not realize there was such a thing. And so we've asked Great West to come and explain this option. And Ms. Tyron is here as a representative of Great West.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, Speaker Wampad, Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz, and members of this honorable body. My name is Alice Tyron, and I am the Director of Client Relations and Plan Counseling for Great West Financial. Great West Financial is the third-party administrators for the Government of Guam Defined Contribution Retirement System 401A Plan. Thank you. Great West is the third-party administrator for the Government of Guam Defined Contribution Retirement System 401A Plan and the Government of Guam Deferred Compensation Plan. Before I begin, I would like to say that Great West Financial remains neutral on the issue of the current bill being discussed. We will continue to administer these two plans as required and assist the Government of Guam Retirement Fund in however way they may request of us. With that said, I am appearing before you at the request of the Retirement Fund and the Honorable Vice Speaker to respond to questions you may have, I believe, in reference to Secure Foundation. Okay. I had a packet of information provided to the members of the body, senators. That's just a few -- a little bit of information about Great West. You can skip that. And just to fly a reference with regard to the kind of programs and services we provide to DC members and members of the Deferred Compensation Plan. Just things that we do for enrollment, financial education, investment fundamentals, the whole bit, saving for retirement. And that's what Great West is about, saving for retirement. And then you have in your packet a whole bunch of information regarding Great West Secure Foundation. Great West Secure Foundation is not a retirement plan. It is an investment option that's made available to Government of Guam employees. You have a list here of investment options at a glance. This is a table of all the investment options available to members of the 401A Plan and the 457 Deferred Compensation Plan. Part of that included in here is the Great West Secure Foundation Investment Option. What Great West Secure Foundation is, is a target date fund with a guaranteed withdrawal benefit. It addresses -- it provides a guaranteed lifetime payment. It's a floor for participants or individuals who are invested in this option. All right? So that's, in essence, the best way I can explain it. It provides a guaranteed retirement -- guaranteed retirement payment for participants participating in this investment option, Great West Secure Foundation Fund. There are different types. They're called target dates. So target date is the year that an individual is expected to retire, usually on or near the age of 65, which is considered normal retirement age. So let's say, for example, an individual is going to retire in the year 2050. Prior to 2050, 10 years prior to that date, a fee begins to be assessed for that guaranteed protection. That guaranteed protection is a floor. It's a benefit based on the account value of the participant and a certain percentage. And that's their floor. Should the market decrease and the account value decrease, the participant remains at that floor. That amount remains steady, all right? It is not impacted or affected by market fluctuation at that point in time, okay? The benefit base is calculated. If the market should increase and the account value of a participant's account increases, then the floor rises with that, all right? And then should the market decrease, the floor remains the same. So it provides a guaranteed withdrawal benefit for life. It's a floor. That's how it works. It's basically an investment option with a deferred annuity. And it pays for life, depending upon the age of a participant and when they start withdrawing, calculations are made. So any questions with regard to that?
Okay, I got several questions. My first question was, how come you guys didn't submit any testimony with respect to this bill?
As I indicated on the onset, Great West, as the third-party administrators, we remain neutral on this bill and what it is that the Retirement Fund seeks to do. We will assist if they request of us information with regard to numbers of participants there and so forth, we'll provide it. We'll assist them in whatever way they require of us. But Great West remains neutral with regard to this bill, and we cannot.
You will find in your -- in the committee report that Great West did submit testimony to that very point.
Well, yeah, but I mean, my question is, why is Great West taking the neutral position? Because, I mean, it seems like the defined contribution perspective is just incredibly, if not underrepresented, not represented at all with respect to the entire conversation of what we should be weighing in terms of options for the current employees. And so, I mean, I'm just very curious as to why Great West would not want to say anything one way or the other. Is it because you have a contractual relationship with the fund and you're worried that your perspective might be contrary to the fund's and that could put the contract in jeopardy?
No.
So why doesn't Great West have anything to say about the benefits of a defined contribution plan?
If we're asked to discuss benefits of a defined contribution plan, we can respond to that, but we will not respond to specifics regarding this hybrid bill. Great West is the third-party administrators. We are the -- we are contracted with the Government of Guam, and we respect the Retirement Fund Board's decisions and will assist. We cannot -- we will speak in general of defined contribution plans, benefits, pros, cons, yes, but not specific to this bill and what it is that the Retirement Fund intends to do. That is for them to decide. That is in their wisdom, and Great West supports them in that -- to that effect.
Okay, so then I guess I do have a whole bunch of questions then with respect to defined contribution plans that you can probably help me with. The first will have to do with the history of contributions to the defined contribution plan with respect to the membership. Now, we have illustrations here provided to us by the Retirement Fund that show the DC plan anticipated or assumed rate at 5% and the hybrid plan at 7%. And I know that these assumptions were based on historical rates of return, but I also know that if you have a member who's contributing to the money market, the rates of return on that are incredibly low. Can you give us a brief history of how long the money market option in the DC plan was the default option? And at what -- from inception, which was 1995, up until what year was the money market option the default option for those who did not elect a retirement option with the defined contribution plan?
I really think that that should be responded to by the fund, but to my -- I wasn't -- I've been with Great West for about seven years, so I believe when I first started, the Stable Value Fund or the Money Market Fund was from 1996 to, gosh, maybe, what, 10 years? Maybe 10 years, and then they moved from a money -- the Stable Value to a -- to profile funds. If an individual were conservative or moderately conservative or aggressive, they moved into that fund. And that was, gosh, 1996, 2006, 2007, earlier. I would say the fund has only been -- this is a very young plan. It's a young plan, 18 years. So I would say maybe seven to 10 in the Stable Value, and then the remaining, like, five years would be in a profile fund. And then they moved to target dates, which was the Black Rock target date. And then recently, at the advice or input of the advisor for the Retirement Fund, the Retirement Fund identified Secure Foundation as a default fund. So an individual who chooses not -- who doesn't choose an investment option would be defaulted into that fund based on the year that they'd be turning 65, using the date of birth as a gauge. And so they're now in the Secure Foundation. So that you're aware, Senator Siniklas, that participants are not tied in or locked into any of these funds. They can transfer, they can switch individual investment options at any time. They don't have to stay in a Secure Foundation Fund or any of the other funds. They can mix and match and so forth. So it's very flexible. They can do that. And then they do have our office for guidance.
So just, I mean, because what I'm really trying to put into perspective here is the fact that, I mean, we had a very animated discussion earlier in the day about the need for us to really compare the returns of the hybrid to the anticipated returns of the hybrid, the assumed returns, to that of the DC plan, and the two numbers were very different. Now, just to put some perspective into the conversation, you're saying that the Stable Value Fund, the Money Market Fund, the very low interest-bearing one, was the default option for about seven to 10 years?
About seven? No, shorter?
It was about seven to 10 years. Could we get an exact number of years?
It is. It's still an investment option, but it wasn't the default fund. The -- no, the profile funds are no longer an investment option, but the Stable Value Fund still is. But when it was the default fund, you're looking at about from 1996 to four years, and then they moved to profile funds? See, yeah, I wasn't here, Ms. -- Senator Siniklas, I do apologize for that. I didn't know I was going to be asked that question, but it was there for a little -- for some time, and then the fund started to change it over, so.
The point that I'm trying to make is, well, multifaceted. First of all, when the default plan is a money market plan, and you're investing the money for, let's say, over the last, since the inception of the fund, it's been -- the DC plan's been around for 20 years. So let's just be conservative and say for five of those 20 years, we had it going into the stable -- we had employees having the default option be the Stable Value Fund.
Yes.
For the following five years after that, just being conservative again, we had the default option being profiles. So they choose conservative, they choose moderate, they choose moderately aggressive, they choose aggressive. And for the five years after that, we finally had target date funds where they put their money in and it starts out aggressive because they have a lot of years to contribute, and then it worked its way into conservative because they get closer to retirement and you want to protect the funds. And now, finally, just this year, we have an annuity option. So the rate of return on the defined contribution plan at 5% that's being used in these assumptions is, I would proffer, unfairly weighted towards a more conservative rate of return because of the history of what the default options were in the fund at the time. And that would behoove why it's important for us to do an apples-to-apples comparison of equal rates of return in both the hybrid and the DC plan, because the reality is, if we had target date funds, for example, from day one inception of the DC plan in 1995, we might not have this current crisis. If we had annuities, which we do now, which is the reason why you're here, that's even news to me, that we have an annuity option now in the defined contribution plan. I mean, that basically provides the floor benefit that everyone here is talking about with respect to this hybrid plan. So I want to put that perspective on the table as I go into my next line of questioning, and that is, what is this annuity plan? And what can we anticipate? Like, let's say someone chose that as their primary option. And using the same assumptions here, they -- excuse me. They make $40,000 a year, and they're putting their full contribution into that annuity. What would their -- what would their annuity be at the time of retirement?
Okay. If you could take out the sheet that I provided, it's a two-pager, kind of looks like this, and it has a colorful chart, all right? Now, with regard to the amounts that an individual participant would have, that varies because that would be determined by a participant's account value. And it also depends on the market performance prior to. So that you understand, this Secure Foundation, a participant doesn't have to choose a Secure Foundation Fund right away. They could have a mix of different investment options. This sheet here is a list of the investment options, the first two pages. This is past performance, not an indication of future performance, but it kind of gives you a history. It gives you a history of how the individual funds that are available to participants have performed, all right? Like, if you look to the far right, if you're looking at the sheet to the far right, you look at calendar returns for 2011, 2012, and 2013, okay? So if a participant were in -- and this is the first two pages, so in the back you'll have the other individual investment options, the mutual funds, okay? So past performance, it's a history of these funds. So a participant who chooses to stay from day one to, in the Secure Foundation, is going to retire in 2050, salary of $40,000, 5% of $40,000 is, that's about $2,000 a year, right? The value, the total in that participant's account is going to be dependent upon the market, all right? And how the market performs, how that investment, its underlying investments perform. I'm sure you understand that very well. So it will increase and decrease according to market. So a participant in a 2050 fund, at 2040, based on that account value, if you look at this picture here, the first block, you see that black block? That's when a participant first started in the fund. So a benefit base is determined -- the guaranteed withdrawal benefit is determined by that account value. And then the account, the fund value, rather, is this, the hill-looking thing in blue, all right? So these little squares is the benefit base, which is determined by that fund value. Now, 10 years prior to there's the retirement, the guaranteed annual withdrawal phase, all right? A participant's guaranteed withdrawal benefit is calculated. That's that last square up here, based on that fund value. If it's -- if the person is 60, they're going to retire, they will, I believe, 5% of their account, and they have $1 million in their account, then they'll be withdrawing 5% of that annually. That becomes their retirement. Now, that 5%, which is 5% of a million, is $50,000, right? That 5% is their base. So they get that for the rest of their life, and they also have the option for, you know, the spousal benefit at that point, there's a certain percentage. So regardless of market fluctuation, that stays the same. If their account value increases, then that $50,000 will increase accordingly, right, to be recalculated. I can't give you exact amounts because it's all going to be different, just like performance is different, and individual accounts, contributions impact account values, impact account balances, market performance. Somebody who's putting in $2,000 a year in a Stable Value Fund is -- cannot expect to make, to have a whole lot with somebody putting it, having asset allocation and diversified in his account. You know, they probably have a greater chance of accumulating more, so that would be different. But Secure Foundation offers that. I don't know if that kind of responds.
No, it does. It does.
And then if you see the line going down, what it shows here is the fund value going to zero, for whatever reason. Let's say the market crashes and the fund value goes to zero. The participant continues to receive that benefit. It's a floor. The amount will never go down unless there's excess withdrawal. Let's say the participant wants to withdraw 50% of their account, then that value, that benefit will decrease, all right? But regardless of the market, that floor remains the same unless the market does well and their account value increases, it ratchets it up, all right? And then that remains there, that becomes their floor. And it's guaranteed for life. The liability is borne upon us, the company who's offering the product. So it is, it's basically a deferred annuity, a lifetime payment.
It's a variable, it's a deferred variable annuity with the floor benefit?
With the floor benefit, and the liability is not borne on the participant?
Or on the Government of Guam?
Yeah.
It's fully absorbed by Great West?
Yes.
Now, I'd like to call attention on the, for the body, for the benefit of the listening public, the investment performance sheet here. And if we look at the 10 years since inception column, we can see returns all over the place, but when we look at this Great West Secure Foundation, which is what we're talking about, this actual floor option as an annuity option, we can see that the returns are 8%, 7%, 8%, 9%, 10%, 9% since inception. So with respect, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to proffer that this existing option in the defined contribution plan already provides the participants with the opportunity to get a floor benefit equal to or even greater than the proposed 7% that the hybrid plan's assumptions were all based on. If we just look at these 10 years since inception returns of 7% plus. On top of that, Mr. Chairman, these returns would be generated on a total contribution of 10% of the employee's pay, 5% of which is provided by the Government of Guam, and another 5% of which is matched by the employee, versus the alternative that's proposed in this hybrid plan of nine, of 1.8% provided by the government and the remaining 9-plus percent being borne by the employee. So what we have here, apparently, with Great West is an option that provides the same rate of return, at least based on the historical assumptions that the hybrid plan is even assuming. However, under the status quo, the government would pay half and the employee would pay half, versus if we changed over, the employee would foot 90, 90-plus percent of the bill. So I'd just like to present that now, now that we have this new information and Great West is participating in the conversation, that we do have an annuity option that would provide a floor benefit equal to or perhaps even greater than what the hybrid's assumptions were based on. At a lower cost to our employees and at no additional cost to government with respect to what we are already contributing. Now, again, Mr. Chairman, this, even if we had employees contributing to this foundation thing that's available, it wouldn't solve the problem of what was created when we had the defaults, the default options for the fund, be the money market for five years and then potentially conservative investments for five years after that, and only after 15 years or 10 years, depending on when it actually took effect, actually having a target date retirement fund that would be based on the total years of service of the employee. So just in a nutshell, it appears to me that going forward, for every new incoming employee, if the premise of this hybrid plan is to provide new employees with a guaranteed floor and a 7% rate of return and a guaranteed retirement, it appears that that option is already available for the new employees. And that risk will be borne by Great West and not by the Government of Guam. And the cost for that would be equal to what the current cost is and not double down on the employee while the government doesn't have to contribute as much. So then the only remaining question is, what do we do about those employees who converted, who can't retire? And again, it brings us back to kind of what I talked about when we were discussing this bill before we resolved in the committee as a whole, that there are multiple options that we can explore when it comes to resolving those employees who we did not create the proper default option for, who were putting their money into money market for five years. I think it was actually more than five years. I remember when I was in the investment industry, I sat down with a client of mine, and as part of my service, I would also look at the GovGuam retirement. And this person was working for about seven years, and they were in the money market. It was their default option. Seven years of service, and they put away $30,000 because the Government of Guam had money market as their default option. And that was where we dropped the ball. We didn't drop the ball because DC was a bad concept. We dropped the ball because we didn't have the right defaults. We dropped the ball because we didn't have Social Security as an option. We didn't have annuities as an option. And even now, 20 years later, we only finally put annuities on the table with respect to the defined contribution plan. So I think the Retirement Fund has been doing a great job of seeing how this thing evolves. As Ms. Tyron mentioned earlier, this is a fairly young plan. This is a fairly young plan, but we've actually, we've actually come a long way in terms of seeing the things that we've done wrong in the past and working towards correcting it. And I think that we're on the right track with respect to that. I really do appreciate the information that you've provided. It does provide us a very keen perspective of what the real apples-to-apples comparison is with respect to what's available right now versus what's being proposed. And I think that this is something that we're going to weigh heavily as we try and navigate what to do next with this hybrid proposal. So I thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Madam Speaker.
I just wanted, I know you said that the support is in the committee, the support testimony by, not by Great West. It actually is by Mercer Investments who submitted a testimony.
Maybe she can explain the review.
Yeah, so maybe, you're right. Can we explain the difference between Mercer and Great West?
Great West is the third-party administrator for the Government of Guam. We handle the, we do the paperwork for GovGuam for new employees coming into the 401 or current employees wanting to participate in the Deferred Compensation Plan, the voluntary plan, voluntary plan. We do the education, retirement savings education. We do the education outreach to all the, to all GovGuam employees and all agencies. So that's what we do. Mercer is the, and it's really a question for the fund, is the investment advisors for the DC Defined Contribution Retirement System. And they work directly with the Retirement Fund. We don't have a relationship with Mercer, per se. They're the investment advisors for the fund on the, for the DC plan, and they review our plan, the investments. They actually, they do very well. They review the investments that are made available to the fund, and if there's an issue, and then they discuss that with the fund.
So that explains, then, of course, now, when you said earlier that you can't, you have to remain neutral and that you cannot provide any testimony, but the testimony really is from Mercer, as you say, who's the investment arm of the retirement plan, for the DC?
Yes.
Just like the, for the, you have, so wait, so then that means Mercer then will be the, could be the actuary for the DC plan, and then you have an actuary for the DB plan?
The actuary for the D, there's only one actuary for the DB plan, and that's Milliman. And that's Rich, right? For the DB plan, investment consultant is Wilshire, which is, you guys met Maggie Robalsky at the public hearing. And Terry Dennison is the Mercer representative who represents the DC investment consultant.
The question I have, and I didn't catch it, did you say there was a, with the Secure Foundation, that there is a spousal benefit?
Yes, there is a spousal benefit. I believe in one of the sheets that I provided, a participant can choose, on the second page of this two-pager, the one with this picture in the front, on the back it explains, you have, a participant can choose joint life. So in the event something happens to that participant, the spouses, the spouse receives a benefit. The Secure Foundation is also portable to the extent that if a participant leaves and they want the benefit, that guaranteed withdrawal benefit, they can roll it into an accepting employer plan if they have a Secure Foundation funds or an IRA. And also, if a, an individual passes or the spouse passes before funds are exhausted, not the benefit, that's different from the fund value, that goes to beneficiaries, to their heirs. So it addresses that. But yes, there is a joint life benefit in the Secure Foundation.
And I know you said also early on that this is a fairly young plan.
Not Secure Foundation, the 401, Madam Speaker.
Oh, the 401?
Yeah. The 401 is a, yeah.
Okay, the 401 is a new plan, young plan?
Yeah.
But the Secure Foundation?
The Secure Foundation has been in existence with Great West for some years now, but it's new, it's come to Guam since, I think, maybe 2011, 2012. It started in maybe the mid-2000s, late 2000s with our company. It's a product that's provided by our company. It's an investment option with a deferred annuity. It's not a plan.
Okay. But then we heard Vincent mention earlier, when we first asked the question before, it was requested that you come in to explain this further, that it was only this year, then, that the Secure Foundation has actually been, has been offered now to the individuals, employees who are in the DC plan.
I apologize, I wasn't following the hearing. The Secure Foundation, this year has become, has been identified by the Retirement Fund Board as the default fund for DC participants and those not choosing an investment option. So this year, it's become the default fund, the new default fund for participants.
Thank you. Earlier, I know that in the presentation as to why the hybrid, because several things that you've mentioned was important to have, is that, one, you said you wanted to make sure that there is a floor in the hybrid, and now we're hearing that the Secure Foundation has a floor. Two, you're saying is that because you didn't have any survivor benefits or spousal. Two, you're saying is that because you didn't have any survivor benefits or spousal benefit, we're hearing now the Secure Foundation actually provides for that. And then the other, the third, looking at my notes, is that you look, there are incremental increases then to address inflation. However, also in this plan, they're saying that it protects their retirement income when the market goes down because of that floor, then it also, if it goes up, then they're allowed also to get the benefits, to reap the benefits when the market goes, goes up. So, I mean, just look like Senator Siniklas said, apples-to-apples, if, if, are, these are all the things that you're, you're looking for in the hybrid, but we're seeing it also in the, in the Secure Foundation. And then the last now statement made was that it is then also used as a default plan. So, and I don't know who can answer this question, but I mean, just in my simple comparison here, I'm just now wondering, you know, looking at the employee contribution in the hybrid of 10 and 1/2, but really only 1% will be used to, quote-unquote, provide the hybrid of continuing to invest in the, in the, what, 457? That, that you have that in the current plan. So, the question is, is how then, let's say, can we make the employees whole with the D.C. plan, as I asked earlier, and you were, the vice speaker said that you were going to be given some time then to come back and doing the calculations on the possibility of increasing the government's contribution to 1%, 2%, and of course, with the caveat that, you know, they be vested with either five years for the 1% and 10 years for the 7%. But I know you said you won't have those figures until then. So those are some of the things that I think this body would like to look at, other options that, you know, could be available for this body to, to consider, as we hear, of course, you know, your presentation, the others here, the presentation that you gave us in the public hearing. Thank you very much, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you walk us through the different Great Western Secure Foundation annuities here, and just explain briefly, because there seems to be several of them? Looks to be eight or so of these different options, can, and I see that they're, the nomenclature is different, one says 2015, 2020. Can you just explain for the, the audience what, what those mean?
Sure. The numbers that you see when you see Great West Secure Foundation are actually in of the funds here that have, these are years. So you have the year 2015, the year 2020, 2030, et cetera. All right? So, an individual who comes, who begins what the government of Guam say is born in 1968, doesn't choose an investment option, they would be defaulted into a fund that's going to be near the age, near the year they turn 65 or near 65. So someone born in 1968 would be 65 in 2035? 20, something like that, right? 2035? So if that individual never did anything, then they would be defaulted into the 2035 fund. And the way Target Date Funds work is, the closer it gets to that year for retirement, the more conservative it becomes. The further away you are, the more aggressive it, it, it works, you know, to, to build growth or grow the, the account. But the closer you get, the more conservative it becomes. So Target Date Funds work, work that way. So, that's, that's really what that is, is different years for individuals when they turn 65. And 65 is normal retirement age.
Okay, so, so it's not specific, so the default then is not specific to any one fund in particular, it's the one that best meets the forecasted retirement age? Meaning, meaning like what you just explained, from the default perspective, though? So if, if, if this individual that you, you had mentioned earlier would be 65 in 2035, they would default into this Great West Secure Foundation LT 2035?
Yes.
And vice versa? So if you had a younger individual come in, they would subsequently be defaulted into that?
To like a 2050 fund, yes.
Now, the defined contribution member could opt out and choose a different investment portfolio if they so choose?
Most definitely, Senator.
Okay, so all 10% defaults to one of these Secure Foundation funds? Going forward, when did that, when was that instituted? Just this year?
Well, it's the default fund this year.
Just, just started this year?
Yes.
Okay.
We just...
What was the default prior to that?
It was the BlackRock Target Date, and then prior to that was the Profile Funds, and then prior to the Profile Funds, you had the Stable Value Fund.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then in addition to that, they can choose whatever investment portfolio, whatever investment options exists for use of their 457 deferred plan as well, if they chose to contribute to that?
Yes. The same investment options are available in the 457, and the same thing applies if an individual enrolls in the 457, and they choose, they, they leave their investment option blank, they would default into one of the Secure Foundation Funds. So it would work the same way.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Any other senator have any questions? I haven't had lunch, so I can... If there's no questions, let's recess until Tuesday, because I want them to do the actuaries that, that you all wanted.
What time is it?
Nine.
Okay. No objections?
All right? We'll recess 2 o'clock, I mean, 9 o'clock on Tues, Tuesday.